Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee. Good afternoon, excuse me, and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Monday, December 20th, 2021. Council will continue to meet in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue registering and speaking virtually. There are limited numbers of seats available in our chambers. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus? Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kalesmith?
Here, sorry.
Mrs. Strasburg?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is registered speakers. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited as matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. I don't believe we had registered speakers for this afternoon. Therefore, I will open it up to those both with us in chambers and online. Is there anyone wishing to speak before city council this afternoon? Please come forward at this time.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, I'm belt's over, and I also have residence in Montpelier, Vermont, Global Intelligence Society founder, 2010. My primary email address is CGSIi.rlm.globalintelligence@gmail.com. GIS US National Candidate 2024. Global intelligence is a fusion of the disciplinary intelligences and informational frameworks or paradigms of the 21 primary disciplines. I am committed to nonviolent civil, noncooperation with this government. A concern of council is banging down on Pittsburgh crime, unlawfulness, lawbreakers, on intense official concern to the Bureau of Police and its law officers are gangbangers. Gangbangers, what do they do? They make laws of their own. They break city laws. They do what they, to do what they want. Gangbangers. Is there a dark budgeted elite secret police force? A government gang who report directly to the mayor? Who deal with gangbangers? Gangbangers. Are there City of Pittsburgh rogue? Secret police gangs like in LA who roam and root out gangbangers? Who are part of a US national police gang network? Gangbangers. Are there Pittsburgh? Role models for gangbangers? Yes. You counselors. Mr. Lavelle? You break with other counselors. You break city, state, and national laws. You break your own rules to do what you want. Have you talked with anybody who is a gangbanger in the Hill lately? I have. You know what they say about you? In a riff on Gillespie to Tibbs in In the Heat of the Night? They say you're just like us. You understand what that means? That they view you and the rest of this counselor, council as a form of gang banging? Citizens, especially citizens who are of black African descent, that you're questioned by the Pittsburgh police. One, do not provide a police officer with your ID. Pennsylvania has no stop and identity law. Two, do record the officer's badge number. Three, do not talk to the officer. Say nothing. You have the US Fifth Amendment right to silence and do record everything. And do contact a lawyer. Submit to no questions without legal counsel. And remember the 1996 USA versus the City of Pittsburgh case on police brutality in this city.
Thank you. And I misspoke earlier. We actually do have two registered speakers. I apologize. Our first being Naomi Mullen.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. We, the people, say no zone change in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania Constitution states under political powers that all power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did certain public officials get the impression that they're lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The PPS Board and administration has created a controversy against us. After repeated speeches to the board and city council, they have not dropped the sale of Bon Air School. It is a crime to use a falsehood to vote, create a resolution, sign a sales agreement, transfer a property, or create a legal contract under a misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against crime when notified. You have been notified. But the issue has united our neighborhood regardless of political party or race. We have hundreds of signatures on our petitions to prove community support for a green space. We are not going to accomplish peace when a development creates hostility over parking. Safety won't be able to be obtained if our children are not safe at the playground. Happiness will be reduced and the value of our quality of life. So that's not promoting happiness either. We, the people of Bon Air, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant financial value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that any American will make is generally their home. Our biggest assets are now being threatened. The Pittsburgh Public School Board, administration, and Gregory Coyle are causing negligent infliction of emotional distress and block busting by their opposition to our community. These are real damages that we, the people of Bon Air, demand remedy for. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and a personal injury that arises when a defendant acts so carelessly that he or she must compensate the injured person. Has city council taken any steps toward a resolution to protect the Bon Air property owners from enemies that continue to harm us? We are being threatened. My sincere, consistent request is that a city council would create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air School Building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat. Reduce water.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikona Halmaquina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikona Halmaquina and the Grand Inka of the Airquack Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians. As I sat and listened to the meeting earlier, while city council debated whether to support legislation for police accountability, to foster police accountability and stop doing unlawful police chases, I wanted to read to you a tribute that my aunt wrote about my brother. This tribute reads. Tribute and loving memory of Jerome Smith, a son, a grandson, a nephew, a brother, a father, a cousin, a friend, to many. Romy was a Marine, a softball coach for his church. This tribute begins about a young man whose life on this earth was shortened tragically by a car accident, which took his life and the life of a driver, a young woman, and mother. Michelle Rankin is her name. A police chase changed so many lives. The police were chasing someone whose car had a broken taillight. When the driver of the car ran a red light and struck the car, Jerome was in, killing Jerome and the driver, and injuring others. Romy's death was senseless. The innocent life lost, another tragedy in the quest to enforce the law regardless of the cost. Negligence by those sworn to protect and serve changed the lives of not just the victims, but their entire family and their friends. Jerome had great things on the horizon in his life. Jerome D. Smith, born October 28th of 1971, grew up in the City of Pittsburgh. He was affectionately known as Romy by those who knew him well. His education began at home, then in the Pittsburgh Public School System where he graduated. Jerome then enlisted into the Marines. Where much discipline was required to prepare him for some of life's challenges as a husband and a father. Jerome had dreams of becoming in health and wellness industry. He attended Western School for Health and Business, where he focused on his God-given talent and gifts, and graduated in 2004 as a massage therapist. He earned the title of Massage Wizard. I'll cut this tribute a little short just to remind everybody that Jerome was a man with rights. And in the City of Pittsburgh, there already exists protocol that was not followed. You need a grand jury indictment, a warrant, a sworn affidavit from an injured party. These officers are acting ultra-viruses, violating people's rights day in and day out. This legislation to support the accurate application of law.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with us today in chambers and or online? Please come forward. Add your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street, apartment 316. I come today because I still feel that as citizens, you need to know, whenever we have these meetings and they're on Zoom, you don't see them talking amongst themselves while we're talking. I come down, and now I've gotten so that I don't want to come, but I must in order for the health and safety of our communities. I want you to look at this sign. This is Wilkenberg in Focus Warning Dangerous and Harmful for Communities and Our Health. And it was my son that they left laying on the floor. They wouldn't even call for someone to take him to the hospital. And I will say this, that all of us grieve in certain different ways. You just can't tell me that I'm wrong for grieving for my son the way that I do. I come down to let you know that you had a man on the floor crying and saying he had only one lung. You need to understand, when my son walked into that house, he got knocked out. He had turned his head. He said, "Man, I live here," and he knocked him out. Then he headbutted him and headbutted him. Then when they left him on the floor, they said, "He's the troublemaker." But the man that they let go had an ankle bracelet on. They wrote down that he didn't want to start any trouble. But just need to realize that this man was a shorter man. I have a picture of him. He's lichen infected. My son is very dark. You know how Indians are about color. He's got a colorism problem here. Colorism, sexism, racism, especially you, Mr. Burgess. Anytime I'm speaking with three minutes that I'm allowed to, and you stop me and tell me I'm not permitted to speak, you took away my rights to be able to speak. Even my grandchild, you say she has no business speaking, whereas you got your councilwoman who brought, who was gone for months. We didn't even know she was on maternity leave and brought her baby back and sent and did work with the baby, but my five-year-old can't come down and speak? You know what, Mr. Burgess? You say you're a reverend, but a lot of people think that you are touched by the devil. I believe you're touched by, with your forked tongue. You know what a forked tongue is? You don't speak the truth, and you're saying that you are a man of God. Only God will answer to you. You will only, I mean, you'll only have to answer to God. You don't have to answer to me. I'm nothing. But I still feel that anytime I came down here, 27 years, every meeting that I possibly took, then on top of that, I am now 75, and you can't give me respect?
Thank you. Any further speakers with us today and or line? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. One recommitted paper, Bill 2174.
Bill 2174, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title V Traffic Article I Administration Chapter 503 Enforcement and Control by Adding a New Section 50317 Equitable and Fair Enforcement of Motor Vehicle Laws.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Session.
I said I wasn't going to say much about it, but after what you said, Mr. Lavelle, earlier, I just want to be clear. All I'm asking this council to think about is, should we have a public hearing concerning this? And also, should we disregard law enforcement, all of law enforcement, county, regional, and city? To me, I feel like it warrants a public hearing at the very least before we pass it in its original form. If council decides it next week that we don't need that, that's fine, and we'll discuss that as we move along in future post-agendas in public forums. But just wanted to be clear, I haven't given up on the notion as to, I feel like we should have public hearing on this before we enact it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Council President Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that while I agree we should have a post-agenda and a public hearing on most of our bills, I mean, to be quite honest, there's a lot of things that we rush through. I think this issue is so important to the public that I feel like, let's pass it and work through. I want to make sure the community feels safe in the community, but I also want to make sure officers feel that supported by us too. So it's a, it's a bad situation. I mean, but we are where we are at this point, and I know that you feel the same way. You want people to be safe, and you know that there are some issues. So I think forming this task force and work with incoming administration to figure out how we address police reform and do it in a responsible way where the public has some input, I think it would be great. But I think for now, I think this is the bill that's on the table, and I think that we have time to work on it. Nothing's ever final. I said that this morning. I've seen us pass things that, and then turn around and, you know, change the entire bill by amending, by substitution, or totally deleting a bill. I've seen us do that. And so if we find that this has some kind of negative unintended consequences, I know this council is responsible enough that we'll make sure we take those steps to address those issues and to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of the residents. But right now, I'm hearing a lot of people, my district and your district are different. I mean, let's face it. I mean, neither one of our districts will be, for the most part, will be supportive of us voting in favor of this. I'm, I'll be frank. I mean, they're just not going to be supportive, but sometimes we have to do what's right for the entire city. And to me, this is what's right for the entire city at this time. I do think we absolutely deserve to have additional conversation. I absolutely think that we should not, I've said this before a long time ago, council should not be writing legislation about law enforcement without some experts at the table. I mean, we really don't know what we're doing. I mean, we're not law enforcement, that's like us writing a prescription. You know, we're not doctors, we're not law enforcement officials, but I think it's important for us to work with them. And I do know Reverend Burgess has worked with the chief, and he has worked with the Public Safety Director on these. And I do know the incoming administration already said publicly that they are supportive of this and probably even more measures, to be honest. So I think that forming the task force is the important part, that we can move forward together in a responsible way. But I am absolutely in favor of a post-agenda and public hearing, even after we pass it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The bill was introduced on the 8th of November. It's been on the table 42 days. There was ample opportunity for us to schedule post-agendas and public hearings on Christmas Week. It's, no one, no one has the capacity to step aside from all the obligations that people have at this time of the year to attend a post-agenda and or a public hearing. I will offer this, as Councilman Burgess said, I'm fully committed to passing this before yours end. If it's the will of the body and it helps Councilman, Coghill, right? Is that who it is?
That's what I felt today.
I'm happy to assist and be part of a post-agenda and a public hearing in the new year. As is said earlier today, the council always has the power to ebb and flow and to tweak as we see fit to avoid any unintended consequence. The importance of this now, though, is to certainly pass this by yours end, the council session ends. If it doesn't pass by yours end, we are back to square one, we're introducing it in early January. So I knew if I did this would start a conversation, but I feel so very strongly about this bill, and I shouldn't be smiling while we're talking about this. I just think this is absolutely imperative that we do this. And I will, I will assist, though, in the new year to have broader conversations, making this part of police reform, part of a new administration. And, but please, I ask us to do our duty and pass the bill before the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to say, if it works for members, we can, I can make a motion right now to change the time point for when we receive. I can't remember the language because of the bill in front of me, but where we receive a report a year after it's implemented, maybe we could, you know, move that up so we get that, was that a six-month report? Yeah, like three months, four months, a quarter, like quarter of the year, we get, you know, that report since we would have.
I want to do whatever council, I think the annual date is what the police wanted. I mean, the Public Safety and the police asked for annual report because they wanted time to get enough data to compare it to. So that's, that's what they asked for. It wasn't, and so that the, they asked for two, I'm sorry, that's not my, I'm answering that, there are two things they asked, three things. One was the inspection date that we changed. One was time to train the officers to implement it. And the other one, it was an annual, and I promised privately that I would work with the Public Safety Administration and the police that there was any, and I've said this to Mr. Coghill, if there's any negative consequences, I'm willing to revisit this and make tweaks and changes as we need to.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One in opposition. Bill receives an affirmative recommendation. That takes us to supplemental papers, the first being Bill 2358.
Bill 2358, Resolution Further Amending and Supplement, and Resolution Number 855 entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring $1,500 to Hilltop Alliance Within District Three Neighborhood Needs.
Read 359 as well.
350 to 2359 Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 93, Providing for an Agreement and/or Contract for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Council District Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Three, and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof by Transferring $1,500 to Hilltop Alliance. Total cost of all District Three Neighborhood Needs project is not to exceed $51,443.77.
A motion to approve. Session, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Both bills are recommended, Bill 2360.
Bill 2360, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Law and/or Director of Department of Finance on behalf of the city in full and final settlement related to litigation in the Court of Common Pleas to accept $325,000 to issue a warrant in favor of Beth Ann Butler and Charles Butler and their attorneys totaling $5,000 for the purchase of certain property and further authorizing the execution of a deed and other documents as needed to complete said property purchase.
Question to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Can we now read Bill 2365 and 2366 together?
Bill 2365, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 549, Providing for the Agreement and/or a Contract for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs by Transferring $2,700 within District One Neighborhood Needs for a District Two Project. Bill Number 2366, Resolution Further Amending and Supplement, and Resolution Number 855 entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $2,700 Within District One Neighborhood Needs for a District Two Project.
Let's do a proof.
Second.
Session.
I just want to thank Councilman Wilson because we had a sign put up and shared, and it was approved, and it wasn't approved, and then, long story short, the community groups waiting for their funds to be reimbursed through CDBG, and Councilman Wilson stepped in to help us with his neighborhood needs money, and so I thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Thanks. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Both bills are recommended. That takes us to deferred bills. Can we please read 2271, 2272, and 2273 together?
Bill 2271, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of Two Warrants in Favor of Plafcheck Construction Company Totalling $30,349.98, which shall be allocated as follows: $25,000 payable from the Department of Parks and Recreation, and $5,349.98 payable from the Department of Law in final settlement related to litigation in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill 2272, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of Two Warrants in Favor of Plafcheck Construction Company Totalling $56,391, which shall be allocated as follows: $45,113.09 payable from the Department of Public Works, and $11,277.92 payable from the Department of Law in final settlement related to litigation in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number 2273, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of Two Warrants in Favor of Plafcheck Construction Totalling $30,136.76, which shall be allocated as follows: $5,370.75 payable from the Department of Public Works, and $24,766.11 payable from the Department of Law in final settlement related to litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County.
Question to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills are recommended. That takes us to our new papers. Would a clerk please read 2321 and 2322 together? Having spoke with the administration, I would ask for a motion to table.
Bill 2321, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quick Claim Deed on All Related Documents, Agreements, and Instruments Conveying as is all of the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in Block 25B, Lot 15, Block 29F, Lot 89, and Block 25P, Lot 39 of Ward 6 and Ward 2 of Council District 7, to the URA for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveniences, and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to third parties. Bill Number 2322, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance on behalf of the city to acquire from the URA all of this URA's right, title, and interest, if any, into the URA's own properties located at 6111 Butler Street in the 10th Ward, Council District 7, designated as Block 120G, Lot 145, in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, known as 62nd Street Site, or the sum of $1. known as sixty-second Street Site or the sum of one dollar plus all necessary and incidental expenses in connection with such acquisition.
Motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second? We have a motion to approve on the table, is there a second? If there is no second, the motion to approve fails.
Motion to table. Was that not what we, you asked us to do?
Second.
It's not legally on the table because you didn't get a second on the motion.
So that forces us to move on. Would a clerk please wrote a, read the bill?
Bill twenty-three twenty-three, resolution amending resolution eight sixty-six, authorizing the creation of the Emergency Medical Services Hazardous Materials Trust Fund to rename the fund and clarify and update its uses.
There are motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three twenty-four.
Bill twenty-three twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority of the city to document local corporate, corporation and the housing authorities agreement to make payment in lieu of taxes for the Manchester redevelopment housing development.
Madam Clerk, you actually read bills all the way through twenty-three twenty-nine?
Sure.
All agreements with the housing authority.
Bill twenty-three twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority to document local corporation and the authorities agreement to make payment in lieu of taxes from the Northview Mid-Rise Housing Development. Bill number twenty-three twenty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority to document local corporation and the housing authorities agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase One Housing Development. Bill number twenty-three twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority to document local corporation and the housing authorities agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase Two Housing Development. Bill number twenty-three twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority to document local corporation and the housing authorities agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase Three Housing Project Housing Development. Bill number twenty-three twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a corporation agreement with the housing authority to document local corporation and housing authorities agreement to make payment in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase Four Housing Development.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all bills are recommended, Bill twenty-three thirty.
Bill twenty-three thirty, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of certain property having been placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, item A through D, thirty-four forty-seven Milwaukee, fifty-four fifty-four Kincaid, sixty-three forty Maxwell, one forty-one Burbank.
Prove. I'm afraid to say it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You all tricked.
The bill is approved. Bill twenty-three forty-nine.
Bill twenty-three forty-nine, resolution amending resolution number five eighty entitled, authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the U R A for the completion of projects approved in the city's American Rescue Plan by previously approved U R A A R P funding to a food justice fund.
Motion to table.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, the bill has been tabled, there's no discussion on the table, but Councilwoman Gross, did you want to give context?
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, I should have said something, um, before the motion to table. But I, I just wanted to thank all members for their input and everyone has positive suggestions. And I think there's some real interest here to move forward in the new year. And, um, since last week, I've been in discussions with the, the Gani administration, who's also expressed, um, interest and support. Uh, we've been pulling together some additional policy materials that I think will be helpful to members. And I, I look forward to more discussion on this item, but, um, since it was, we'll probably change the sources of funds. It was just easier to table this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to applaud you for your efforts, Councilwoman Gross. You know, you're relentless when it comes to this. And I do agree in the, you know, when we reopen the budget, um, the opportunity will be there to actually do something moving forward. So, um, I know it's in your, in the right hands and your, under your, uh, guidance and, uh, look forward to helping you push it through in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
I really just had a parliamentary question, maybe for the clerk or anyone else who can answer this for me. When we table a bill, is there any sort of restriction on the length of time that must pass before reintroducing, say in the next session or new session, new session, it could, okay?
Yeah, I believe on, once we enter a new sec, a new session, anything can be brought back to the table.
Thank you. Right.
Only the zoning deals, those sort of things. So the only ones that, that live, because in that case, we're not fault, we're not, we're not functioning as a legislative office, functioning as a quasi adjuvantial office. We focus in, in that capacity, our sessions have no bearing.
Thank you.
Well, uh, need a motion to approve the invoices. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, invoices are approved, need a motion to approve the insurance departmental transfers.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, transfers are approved, need a motion to approve the P cars.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, P cars are approved. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, one paper, one supplemental paper, excuse, no. Bill twenty-three fifty-seven.
Bill twenty-three fifty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the U R A for in-right park improvements and further providing for an agreement or the use of existing agreements and expenditures at a cost not to exceed one million dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, new papers, Bill twenty-three oh seven.
Bill twenty-three oh seven, resolution for the amending resolution number seven ninety-seven entitled, resolution adopted and approving the twenty-eighteen capital budget, the twenty-eighteen CDBG and the twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-three capital improvement program by reducing Smolma Street reconstruction by seven thousand dollars and increase in bike share by seven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three oh eight.
Bill twenty-three oh eight, resolution providing for a settlement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with work on the Central Business District Signal Phase Two project with a total project cost of five million three hundred four thousand and one dollars, of which is already appropriated and spent, and the municipal share of common wealth incurred cost not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cent, an increase of three thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cent from the previously executed agreement.
Second. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three oh nine.
Bill twenty-three oh nine, resolution of providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the addition of the final design right-of-way and utility phases of the Swineburn Bridge Project and providing for the payment not to exceed two million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an increase of, I'm sorry, two million three hundred fifty thousand dollars, a one million three hundred thousand dollars increase from the previously executed agreement reimbursable at ninety-five percent and the municipal share of common wealth incurred cost not to exceed four thousand dollars, an increase of two thousand five hundred dollars from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve.
Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three ten.
Bill twenty-three ten, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Pittsburgh pedestrian weighfinding project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed one million four hundred thousand dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of zero dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three eleven.
Bill twenty-three eleven, resolution providing for a supplemental agreement with the Larson Design Group for costs associated with the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment not to exceed eight hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred twelve dollars and ninety cent, an increase of eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cent from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three twelve.
Bill twenty-three twelve, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Health and Ride Electrified Project through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three thirteen.
Bill twenty-three thirteen, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation through their transportation alternative seat aside program for costs associated with work on critical sidewalk gaps project and providing for the payment of costs not to exceed nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars federally reimbursable at one hundred percent and the municipal share of common wealth incurred cost not to exceed zero dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three fourteen.
Bill twenty-three fourteen, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title Four Public Place and Property Article Two, telecommunications in the right-of-way by amending and supplementing language dissections establishing certain general and specific standards relating to the location, placement, construction, maintenance of non-tower wireless communication facilities and small cell facilities, establishing certain general and specific standards for wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-ways, establishing certain general and specific standards for wireless communication facilities outside the public right-of-ways, providing for definitions, providing for the enforcement of said regulations and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Yes, um, I was briefed on this last week by, uh, Angie Martinez and Kim Lucas, uh, Domi, um, Domi, uh, Director. So, uh, two main things that they pointed out to me that were important. We are trying to make it, well, first of all, we're doing this to be in compliance with the state, okay? Um, the state requires us to be, uh, you know, recertified or in compliance with this year. I don't know if it's yearly or how long it is, but, uh, the, the first thing was really trying to keep them off our traffic light poles, these small cell towers. And I think, um, you know, Director and Angie pointed out that that was important to them. And the second thing was there was an amendment added as to noise and, um, as to the fans and things like that. We had gotten some complaints and I know Councilwoman Gross may have a question about that as well. And Angie and Kim are here, so they're, I'm sure, can answer any questions we might have. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are you gonna? Yeah, that was gonna be my question.
Oh, yes, I, I would like to motion to amend, right.
Need discussion on the amendment, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, um, thank you to Domi and to the councilmen. I actually do have an email, um, that's new today from, um, the Highland Park Community Council. There are several of the devices in Highland Park that make noise twenty-four-seven. It's a continuous motor, a motor. So it sounds a little bit like a shop vac or some of them a little closer to like a, a hair blow dryer that's running continuously. And one of them is not too far, I'm able to walk by it every day at my house and it's never not making noise. So it's clearly malfunctioning. So they actually have temperature control devices, I'm told, uh, so like little heaters. So imagine like the noise of a, a space heater and blower or again, it sounds to me almost like a, a vacuum cleaner or shop vac thing that's running. And so they're really loud. So I, I'm hoping that this amendment will, um, give us the power to, um, make them comply with our noise ordinances. I'm a little wanting to say on the record, though, that, you know, we have tweaked our noise ordinances several times that I've been here in the last eight years. And sometimes it's like the frequency and that the, the noise is never stopping that really just makes people insane, especially when these things are, could be literally just ten feet outside your, your window or bedroom window, something like that. So I'm hoping our current noise ordinance does bring them into compliance, but in a way that it actually relieves people of this nuisance. Um, but it's something that we're, we're gonna try. And then if, um, if we have to do something with the noise ordinance that gets to that kind of pitch and the, the, the continuous twenty-four hour day noise, then, then we'll have to do that. But I, I want to, um, thank Domi and Councilman Coghill for this first step. It's my opinion that they're just malfunctioning, right? Because I've asked around actually to several of you and I haven't been able to find any of the other reports around the city, um, of the, of these exact same structures making this kind of loud noise.
Do you want to hear from the Director?
No, I think that's okay, but I think, oh, I didn't know you guys were up there because I can't see you. Thank you. Sure, um, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and if you have anything to say, I, I'd be happy.
Sure, my name is Kim Lucas, I'm the acting director for the city's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
And Angie Martinez, Senior Right-of-Way Manager with Domi. Um, to address Councilwoman Gross's, uh, comment about the noise, um, I would, uh, say that we would need to investigate any possible malfunction. I would use that word very, uh, uh, I wouldn't use that word without investigating it because the, um, the devices do have fans to keep them cool in the summer and then also heaters to, um, keep them working properly, um, in the cooler weather. Those, that equipment needs to operate within, uh, the permissible or the amendment and will require that those, uh, devices work within the permissible decibels in city code. Um, so now we'll be able to, to check for that compliance. We can look into those specific locations.
Right, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but like in the last month or so, it's been neither very hot nor very cold. And it's, those things are never not running. So, yeah, interesting. I mean, I, I don't have any other questions, but I'm happy if you have any other comments. And again, I apologize for having to shift from looking at you and to speaking into my microphone.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I have a general question about, um, what prompted all these big amendments? Now we have Cohen Law and...
Yeah, we do have, um, Mike Roberts, representative from Cohen Law Group. Um, the city worked closely with Cohen Law on the update to the ordinance, which came out of, um, some federal and state statutes that were passed. Um, Mike, would you like to give?
Yeah, but specifically like we, this was introduced and then, uh, today I got like this huge amendment packet. So I just didn't know what, in the last week, what happened.
We held a council briefing on Friday and I received some questions at that time.
Okay.
Yeah. Would you permit me to chime in on this?
Yeah.
Is that right, Mr. Chair? So, um, yeah, there, there was also a concern from, um, the tech companies as to the language. And that's in part, part of the amendment today, as you see. That language, um, was checked with our Director and that language was checked with Cohen, who's, uh, uh, attorney on this. And, um, both felt that it was okay and not a problem as far as changing that language. The other language was the noise, uh, the other amendment was the, the noise.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So. Question about that, yeah. Yeah, I understand that, um, about the briefing, but I mean, could you, uh, indulge me?
Sure, on the noise specifically?
No, no, I'm like, why? All the changes in the past week?
Sure, um, well, most of the changes that were submitted, um, at the regular, uh, council session um, were for changes to, um, applicable sections of the telecommunication code that need to be updated as a result of federal and state regulations, um, for our... That need to be updated as a result of federal and state regulations for our city code to be compliant. We did introduce or at the table, there are considerations for two amendments. One having to do with a reference to the city's existing noise ordinance for these devices. And then the second having to deal with a clarification. I believe it's the cubic volume of antennas. To make sure that it's in line with Act fifty in particular, the state statute that was passed over the summer.
Okay, great. So in terms of the noise, I just looked at it, it says general language about it, it points back to our P L I code. Our noise ordinance code and P L I would enforce it. Do we know that that level is? We don't know.
I'm not sure on that one.
I think they kept it in line with the state, but I don't know what that is either.
We, we kept.
We have our own noise ordinance.
Yeah.
And there's a decibel level.
So, the, what is in title for now is consistent with the noise ordinance for other applications. Within the city code. If you're asking if it's more or less, or if these devices should be more or less restrictive.
It seems like it might not pick it up. You know? Alright, we shall see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else first round? Second round, Councilman Coghill, did you want to?
No.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-fifteen.
Bill twenty-three-fifteen, resolution amending resolution number three thirty-two entitled. Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement. Between the city and Winston Design Development for Architectural and Engineering Design Services. For a series of interior remodels for six fire stations within the city. At a cost not to exceed four hundred seven thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-six cent. To the not to exceed amount of seven hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first new paper is Bill twenty-three-sixty-one.
Bill twenty-three-sixty-one, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixteen entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the twenty sixteen capital budget. Twenty sixteen C D B G program and the twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one capital improvement program. By reducing Allegheny West by seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Reducing Cameron Welch Youth Baseball by two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Increasing Community Alliance of Spring Garden each Dutch Town by ten thousand five hundred dollars and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
You please read sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four as well.
Okay, Bill twenty-three-sixty-two, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two. Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Seventeen Capital Budget. Twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two capital improvement budget by reducing Allegheny West by six thousand dollars. Reducing Brighton Heights Senior Center by twenty-five hundred dollars. Increase in Community Alliance of Spring Garden East, East Dutch Town by eighty-five hundred dollars. And authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill twenty-three-sixty-three, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-seven. Adopting and approving the Twenty Eighteen Capital Budget. Twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by reducing Saint Ambrose Manor by six thousand dollars. Reducing District One D P W Projects by twelve thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Increase in Community Alliance of Spring Garden each Dutch Town by eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And authorizing a subsequent agreement. Bill number twenty-three-sixty-four, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three. Adopting and approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget, the Twenty Nineteen C D B G Program. Twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Program. By reducing Historic Dutch Town Development Corporation by five thousand dollars. Increase in Community Allowance of Spring Garden East Dutch Town by five thousand dollars and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve discussion? I just wanted to thank Whitney Finstrom and also our Budget Office for helping me work this out. This is something I've been working on for some time with the Caskeya Community, the community of Alliance of Spring Garden East Dutch Town. I often talk about this at land bank, which is usually when we talk about property, there's no one on the other end to actually be the. Be the, someone's going to steward those properties and get them into what the community has a vision for. And this is the, will fund most of that position at this, at this neighborhood group. This neighborhood group's been, they own several vacant abandoned properties. And this is hopefully a turning point for this neighborhood. To get the right person there to help move these properties in the right way. Just want to say that, you know, I appreciate the new method of doing C D B G where we. Have them qualify prior to allocation. Unfortunately, we were unable to bring these groups under contract because the, you know, the legislation was done prior to. Seeing if they were qualified. If the activity that the use will be used for, we qualify. Hope I said that correctly. Anyway, I want to thank all members. It's a big step for the Spring Garden community. And looking to, you know, what they, what they, what they plan as a community and what they see for development.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All four bills are recommended. First deferred paper is Bill twenty-one-sixty-five.
Bill twenty-one-sixty-five, resolution providing for the designation as a historic building under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances. The certain site known as Engine Company twenty-eight, located at seven hundred Fieldbrook Street in Shadyside Seventh Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-two-thirty.
Bill twenty-two-thirty, ordinance amending and supplement in the city code at Title Six. Conduct Article One, regulated rights and actions. By adding a new chapter six ten entitled prohibition on use of certain bags and checkout bag charge. To permit the use of only certain bags by retail establishment. At the point of sale or for a delivery and establishing a charge payable by the customer to the establishment. For the provision of other types of bags, all under certain terms and conditions.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
I like to defer to Councilperson Strasburger.
Thank you, Councilman. So I am about to make a motion to table. Because we still have some work to do on this bill to ensure that it's as airtight as possible legally and to work out. Exactly the details of it before it goes into, before it's passed and then six months later goes into effect. So. We had a very spirited discussion. If you'd liked some good viewing, grab your popcorn and watch the post agenda hearing from last Friday. And, you know, I think that there, there was a lot of great discussions and great points that were brought up and questions that still need to be answered. So. I've known for a little while that I wanted to hold this and let it expire at the end of this year and then reintroduce as is as soon as possible in the new year. So that we can continue to work with the law department and council sponsors and advocates to get this over the finish line. So just wanted to make sure people knew their reasoning. We're not letting it die. For very long at least.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
You know, Councilwoman Strasburger, I just want to congratulate your work on this. I signed on as a co-sponsor, which I think surprised a lot of people in my district for some reason, but. I too have the same concerns as you do about plastics. However, I did hear back about the fifteen cents per bag and. Had, you know, I guess become an issue and I appreciate your leadership in this. As you said, by no means is it going away, but we're just going to take this up in the new year. And appreciate, you know, when it comes to environmental things, I think, you know, you're the go-to person on that. Much like Councilwoman Gross is for affordable housing. So continue your good work. I plan, you know, we're closely with you in the future. And hopefully we can get this to the finish line. Thank you.
Do, any further discussion? Councilman Kraus followed by Council President.
I apologize, I missed the post agenda on Friday.
To view it, but could you just, Councilman, they want you a little closer to the mic.
So I wasn't able to be part of the post agenda on Friday because I forgot I had scheduled a Christmas luncheon with some Allentown residents. So could you just maybe give me the skinny on what you took away from the, from the post agenda? Just the, the main bullet points, if you could?
Main issues outstanding are who's going to enforce it? What is the ramp up time for enforcement? Do we start with voluntary move to enforcement over a certain period of time, understanding that especially restaurants? Are going to have maybe some challenges with this. How do we get the word out? Education and what mechanisms do we have to be able to do that in partnership with others? And, you know, fee versus ban for both paper and plastic. There's some really good discussion about both. So I don't think there are going to be too many major, major changes. That said, it was interesting to hear what other cities and states have done and what, you know, has worked and what hasn't worked.
So your desire today is to?
Table. I will make a motion to table and we'll take it up in the new year as soon as possible.
I understand. I understand.
Can I say why? Just because I wanted to make sure you heard as well what I had said before, which is. We still have many issues to work out through the law department to make it as airtight as possible. It is a block back. And, sorry, that was a bad bag, bag joke. And make it just like very, as detailed as possible in terms of how it's actually going to be implemented. Once it is passed. I don't want to pass it prematurely.
No, I understand. And, and I respect your professionalism. This is a big one and this, this needs to happen and it needs to happen right. I will say this, you know, part of it has to be changing the, the, the hearts and minds. And a couple of times through this holiday shopping experience, of which I've had much. I have actually been asked, do I want to go bagless? At a cashier, which was really, really great and immediately I said, thank you very much. I don't need the bag and I'd like to carry it. And thank you for asking me. And I do think that needs to be part of it, that this willingness to just say, do you really need a bag? You probably don't. Or, you know, would you like to help out by not taking a bag? Simple steps like that, but those things catch on. You know, those things really catch on and in time, I think that could be a very big positive to, to this. But thanks for taking us on. This is like permit parking. This, you know, this was not an easy lift. And I appreciate everything you did to bring it this far and I respect your, your professionalism and your decision. And I'm, I'm willing to be your partner in, in the new year. Thank you.
President Smith?
I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for her willingness to do, do this in the right way and to wait. I just want to thank you for, and for educating a lot of us on some of this stuff. I missed the post agenda too, but I did talk to the people. Some of the participants that day in advance. So I just want to thank you for all your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Councilwoman Strasburger?
A motion to table.
We have a roll call vote?
Mr. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kalesmith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell Chair?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. And with that, the bill is tabled. That takes us to our new papers, first being twenty-three-thirty-six.
Bill twenty-three-thirty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning. And director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. To enter into an agreement with the Allegheny County Conservation District with the intent. To clarify roles and responsibilities related to erosion and sediment control. On construction activities with significant earth disturbance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-thirty-seven.
Bill twenty-three-thirty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning. And director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection. To enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. With the intent of delineating each party's obligations with respect to completion of each minimum control required. For N P D E S permit.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-thirty-eight.
Bill twenty-three-thirty-eight, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three entitled. Resolution adopting and approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget. The Twenty Nineteen C D B G Program and the Twenty Nineteen through Twenty Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program. So as to reallocate emergency solutions grant cares at funding and authorize a subsequent agreement. To provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance and housing relocation. And stabilization services and/or data collection activities.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
I'd just like to make a statement saying that. You know, I think there's a larger conversation as we had about shelter services in the city of Pittsburgh and elsewhere. I'm contacted frequently about such services if they're provided to people who are outside. Right now shelters are full and we should all be aware that the shelters are full. So I just wanted to put that out there as we move forward with. I now understand as a reallocation, but as we move forward with trying to understand what we can do for people in need that are outside. I'm done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-thirty-nine.
Bill twenty-three-thirty-nine, resolution amending resolution number eight oh four entitled. Resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three. Entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget. Twenty nineteen C D B G Program and the Twenty Nineteen through Twenty Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program. So as to reduce community-based organizations by four thousand three hundred dollars and twenty-nine cent. Increase neighborhood economic development by four thousand three hundred dollars and twenty-nine cent. And authorize a subsequent agreement to revise a J D Edwards job number.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-forty.
Bill twenty-three-forty, resolution providing for an agreement with Strategy Solutions, Inc. To provide public engagement and citizen participation from the city's annual action plan. And consolidated five-year plan for HUD in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-two thousand ten dollars.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-forty-one.
Bill twenty-three-forty-one, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Student Conservation Association, Inc. In the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred three dollars and twenty-one cents. For sustainability fellowship services provided to the city for placement fees and public sector fellows.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-forty-two.
Bill twenty-three-forty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection. To enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Bab Chalk Acoustics. For sound engineering consultant services at an overall cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended, Bill twenty-three-forty-three.
Bill twenty-three-forty-three, resolution further amending resolution number six seventy-five adopting and approving the two thousand nine capital budget. By transferring forty-five thousand eight hundred seven dollars and sixty-three cent. From West Ohio Street Bridge to East Ohio Streetscape Planning and Design.
You can read twenty-three-forty-four too.
Twenty-three-forty-four, resolution further amending resolution number seven sixty-eight. Adopting and approving the Twenty Ten Capital Budget by transferring four thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cent of remaining funds. From two District One specific capital project to East Ohio Streetscape Planning and Design.
Motion to approve, brief discussion? I just want to say thanks to our Budget Office, Director, Assistant Director, and for helping me find some funds. One of the funds is twenty-three-forty-three is an old account of the West Ohio Street Bridge. As you all know, you've been here at the table longer than I have. There's many discussions and many different plans. Well, this is taken from an order account, but the good news is that this is going to go straight into a planning and design. That I spoke with Domi about for East Ohio Street. So that we can try to envision maybe something that we see on the south side and, and who represents and over in Garfield. With the street with bump outs and nice new planners and, and, you know, pedestrian lighting. So really to do that in community engagement and also to hire a, an outside firm to, to help with that. And get a design put forward to the community. So anyway, some good things coming on East Ohio Street, also. North Avenue as well, so. Thank you.
Bill twenty two ninety nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works. And director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a certain corporation agreement amendment. As further provided herein with the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy. With the intent of extending and expanding the term and scope of the existing agreement.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, yes. Could you explain? Thank you.
I really don't know. My understanding, is there someone online that can talk about this? My understanding, there was, there's no money, it's just extended. Agreement to continue to talk with them, something like that. I think I'm shortcutting it, but I think I'm close.
That's correct.
Ms. Casey?
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you. And that's correct. This is just extending the initial. Agreement that we had with them in nineteen ninety eight, I believe it is, and amended in two thousand and one. There's no money in it. It is working, they would work through our budget process. Beginning May fifteenth every year and the and then the only other changes to work equitably throughout all of our parks.
Want to have something? I'm sorry, you have to wait for him to call you.
Sorry.
I'm done, but I'll probably come back.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. This is where I miss having my giant packet of paper that wastes and trees, but I could look up quickly. And I've been trying to find the attachment on my phone. And I know some members have their their devices that pull up the full text file. Because the difference between what we've done before that we asked for. And that is provided here is to have the cooperation agreement attached. But when I click on it, it's, we won't open it on the legislature. So I don't know if there is an attached cooperative agreement or if there's not an attached. Can you actually open it? It was also my opinion that it wasn't just extending the year term of the Parks Conservancy agreement. But that it was specifically expanding their jurisdiction. To go from only the five rad parks. And to add in all of the parks in the city system, every medium park, every tot lot, every. Parklet. And that I think members have varying degrees of comfort with that. And that while there's no dollar amount, which is good to hear, what we further wanted was not that the Parks Conservancy worked through our budget process. But was not part of our budget process unless council made it so. So I can't see the attachment and I apologize. And it is, I'm sure lengthy. But I just would like to say this into the record that given that we don't want to hold up any projects that may be moving forward. That we can keep our eyes on this cooperative agreement because council has the power to amend these, right? And so if if it appears that the the cooperative agreement. Grants too much power to the Parks Conservancy that it be acting instead of council. That we would revisit and constrain that scope of those powers, right? And so again, a cooperation agreement, it's just kind of like, how do we operate together? We do this part and we don't do that part. You, the external partner, does that part, but not the other part. And so we're just delineating our activities in cooperation. But if we don't like the way that, for example, we don't want the Parks Conservancy to be making budgetary decisions with our DPW department. Out of public sight and out of public conversation. And that means not at the council table, because if it's at the council table, it's in the public site and public conversation. That we that we reconsider this arrangement so that it provides that level of transparency and accountability, especially as we move into neighborhood work. And outside of the rad parks. I mean, I have a project in my district, which we've had the Parks Conservancy under contract for for design and public engagement in Arsenal Park, for example. And we had hoped that they would also do fundraising for the project because that is their mission. To fundraise from the private sector to donate to city parks. And we would like them to kind of come back to that mission for that project. So again, I think we continue this conversation, but I I'm not going to be opposed today. And I just wanted to call that to everyone's attention.
I respond to you real briefly?
Absolutely.
So per the legislation, exhibit A with our legislation. Is the actual cooperation agreement. So you do have it to look at. And in exhibit A, what it appears is mostly being changed is the protocol by which they present projects to the city and to council. But I haven't read every line in terms of what's being added, but that's.
On the floor then? Can I keep the floor then if I can ask a follow up question on that?
You still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Chief Kenzie, since you're, wait, Chief Casey, sorry. Since you're here and I'm going to look at my other screen so that I'm looking like I'm looking at you. There's two different screens here. They are that difference in how they, I think Councilman said, you know, direct projects is something if you could clarify for us.
Sure. So the idea is through Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec. They would come up with what capital projects they would be interested in proposing. The Parks Conservancy would work with them in terms of is that a project they're interested in in working on with the city? So that it would go through the normal budget process, similar to this time. Where the the parks tax went through the normal budgeting cycle and you can see. In very plainly which dollars are going from the parks tax to the parks and which ones are regular operating budget. So they would just work through that process, meaning they would have meetings, they would talk to the director of public works about priorities. And we would work together throughout the entire process and council would obviously be. In the loop in all of this as well because it goes through the budget process. Does that make sense?
It does. I don't know if I like it or not, but it made sense. And so that's what I think council will have to discuss because our budget process. While we can amend capital budgets every week of the year. Our budget process and in public discussions are really only once a year. And so it's our fear, I think, it's my fear and some other members' fear that those discussions with Parks Conservancy kind of telling. DPW or parks, what they're proposing or what they're interested in is a lack of that. And that says to me, what I hear is a lack of transparency and a lack of public engagement. So that's, I think, precisely what we should keep our eyes on. Because the the budgets are. Broad. And again, it's not, and it's once a year. And but our conversations with our constituencies are year round. And so. The idea that, you know, it's, the Parks Conservancy does not have a seat at this table. And if we are, if we feel that we've granted them too much power in this agreement, I think then we'll be revisiting it. But thank you for your information.
Thank you. I believe it's all Councilwoman Strasburger, then Councilman Kraus?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think it was mostly answered, but I also just wanted to point out that in here in exhibit A. That one of the lines is. Around each project agreement, to the extent that Councilwoman Gross has concerns. Coordinate with affected city departments that will be drafting or presenting a resolution to city council. Authorizing the relevant project agreement. Not sure, yeah, and it's. And so I understand that it's not probably addressing the concern about kind of being at the table while the project is being. Developed and, you know, ideally, we'll see how it goes, right? And ideally, it's, yeah, it's us, you know, in concert with the relevant departments who are coming up with the priorities each year. But. There was something else in here. It was about reporting out, but I lost it, so. End of my comment.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Director. Good afternoon, how are you? So while you and I have not had a much opportunity to interact. You have been the consummate professional in your interactions with my office. And I cannot tell you how highly my staff speaks of you and the assistance that you have offered during your service with the city. I just want to say publicly, you will be greatly missed. And professionalism like yours, it doesn't come across, it doesn't come along every day. And you 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 will be greatly missed and I want to thank you very, very much for all the assistance that you offer in my office over your time here.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Well, first, I want to say. In expanding the scope of what the Parks Conservancy does. I'm very happy with. I'm thrilled that they are now looking at the South Hills, which, talking to Catherine Caressi. She's excited to come in the South Hills and we have actually a really big project that Councilwoman Gross and I are going to work on there with the Parks Conservancy that I feel we need them as a vehicle and they're going to be there for that. And that being said, you know, there's been a lot of angst created in the last two years, I would say. Once when the Parks Conservancy took on the campaign to raise our taxes. And I appreciate Councilwoman Gross's always watchful eye on whether it's a co op agreement or whatever agreements are going on. So so I thank you for that. But I really just wanted to say I'm excited to expand the scope of the Parks Conservancy and bring them into the South Hills. For not just the one big project that we're working on, but many things that I feel like it opens up a whole new world. And the Conservancy has expressed that to me too, that they they're excited, they want to be there. So looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Yeah, I just want to say you're killing me, Coghill. But I'm going to abstain today until I have a chance to really read through it. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read bill twenty three hundred through twenty three oh five together? These are all greenways being formally adopted into our parks.
Bill twenty three hundred, resolution providing for the designation. And transfer certain public properties within the Hill District and Polish Hill neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties. Under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill number twenty three oh one, resolution providing for the designation. And transfer of certain public properties within the Overbrook neighborhood from the Greenways for the Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties under city ownership. To be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill twenty three oh two, resolution providing for the designation and transfer of certain public properties. Within the South Side slopes and Allentown neighborhoods for the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties under city ownership. To be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill number twenty three oh three, resolution providing for the designation and transfer of certain public properties. Within the Brookline neighborhood from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties. Under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill number twenty three oh four, resolution providing for the designation and transfer of certain public properties. Within the Beachview and Mount Washington neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties. Under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill number twenty three oh five, resolution providing for the designation and transfer of certain public properties. Within the Hazelwood, Glen Hazel and Greenfield neighborhoods. From the Greenways for the Pittsburgh Program and other adjacent vacant properties. Under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Thank you. I just, is there someone here to talk about these?
Oh, yes, this is Andrew Dash, Director of City Planning.
Hi, good, good afternoon. Could you please talk a little bit just briefly? I just wanted, my concern is, have you talked to the council members in all these areas? I know I represent two of them. And I'd just like to know a little bit more about what they include.
Sure. So my apologies if, you know, Councilwoman Kail Smith, if you weren't notified. This was, I mean, you know, we wrote this on behalf of the mayor and the administration. As, you know, they were looking to provide greater protection to some of these greenway spaces and create them more currently as parks. With the, more greenway is attached to more parks. So in that case, it would be just an expansion of the existing Moore Park from roughly, you know, twelve acres to fifty two. But then creating the other spaces as individual addition park spaces to the city system. And, you know, and therefore giving them that protection as a permanent green space. That can be enjoyed by the public and and will be maintained by the, you know, by the city. You know, as, you know, as council is is likely aware, there are a lot of partnerships that go on. Both in the Greenway system and our park system around a lot of these. You know, hillside areas and natural spaces that that we have. And, you know, it's the intention through this legislation. To, like I said, further formalize that and create, provide better protection and better maintenance of these spaces.
I just want to say I appreciate you and your update and. I love the idea of of this. I just like for council to have some information, but I also think that there should have been some public process. And I don't think, I mean, we keep talking about this public process all day, but we circumvent it when we want to and it's convenient. And and when we really should be doing it, we're totally ignoring that responsibility. Including with this bill and the one with the police. So I think that there, I think that there's, for me. I'm going to probably abstain today, but I really think, and I, but I do like the idea. I just think that they deserve a public process. And the seldom seen, even though the entrances in my district, the bulk of it is in Councilman Coghill's district, in the Mount Washington Park. The entrance is in Councilman Kraus's district, but the bulk of it is in my district. So I think it's, it's probably challenging for, you know, anyone to make sure that they're covering the conversation with all council members. But that's why I think it's good to hear a little bit more about the details. And and I do know that, you know, a lot of times you call or you try to reach out to us. So I don't want to say that no one has, but I think I would remember some of this.
Yeah, I think just, just one point to that. And, you know, like I said, my apologies if contacting you through. But designated these spaces will allow us to to then in the future do planning for these spaces as parks. So similar to Councilman, the work that we did with you and your office in Sheridan Park. You know, or in some of the other recent example, or, you know, some of the other, or in Mount Washington with Emerald View Park. That it would allow us to, you know, after these spaces are designated, then be able to go and do park planning that would entail. A, you know, a much larger and broader, you know, a community engagement process in coordination with city council and their offices.
So I appreciate that, but you know what? I would really appreciate for us to finish some of those projects in Sheridan Park, in Mount Washington. To finish the projects that we have on the books right now. And then, I mean, but I think it's okay to add to them and preserve them. I just hope that. Before you do this, anything like this again, that I'm going to say. I'm ready to honestly to to vote no, but I, but because I do value the idea of what they're going to be used for. And know that there, I share this space with other, with my colleagues. So I wouldn't do that, but. I I really think that it's really important to have a conversation with the council members, but with the public. Before we do some of these, before we move forward with some of these kinds of projects, they're significant. They're not little projects, they're significant. And I really, like I mentioned, I still have the Sheridan Park I want to finish. Although that's, you know, partly in the budget, it seems like we're great at putting things on paper. I want to see us move to fruition, that's all. So thank you very much, but I want to make sure whatever happens in the future. That we're working together on 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 these parks collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, Director Dash, I wanted to ask you, you had said the Moore Park Greenway was just going to be an extension of Moore Park. So the Greenway would be then the Moore Park Greenway or just Moore Park? Is there a definition behind it?
In that case, it would be separate from the other five bills. The Moore Greenway, which is a, you know, it's designated as a Greenway, would be incorporated into Moore Park. And so, you know, Moore Park now, you know, is kind of what you see is the traditional recreation space. But the Greenway kind of goes back past. You know, and behind West Liberty School and South Brook and goes all the way down towards Sawmill Run. To like Timberland, Timberland Avenue, Timberland Street down there.
No, I understand. But I also, on a separate note. The seldom seen Greenway that Councilwoman Kail Smith and I share some of. That is adjacent and connected to a tropical park. Would we do the same thing there? the seldom seen Greenway that Councilwoman Kell Smith and I share some of, that is adjacent and connected to a tropical park. Would we do the same thing there?
Um, the intention was not to, it was not to just add all of that space, the, you know, roughly hundred and, I think it's 110 acres of seldom seen Greenway. You know, because that has its own identity and really only connects at one point to tropical. You know, the intention was to create that as a separate space.
Okay. So that will not be designated as Tropical Park Greenway. It's going to be seldom seen Greenway and remain that way.
It would, it would be, it would become, and obviously the specific names would be something that there would be further discussion and council would ultimately have to approve. But, you know, the way it was designated temporarily was as seldom seen park instead of seldom seen Greenway.
Yep. And, and, you know, I do share some of the concerns that our Madam President has. I, you know, whether I didn't catch it in the email or not, I'm not sure, but it did kind of just spring up on me. I didn't learn until I was talking to, you know, the trib last week when really she had brought it up to me and I thought, well, that's surprising to me. However, I will say I do support it. I really believe that, you know, having the greenways as our city parks, first of all, opens up funds from our parks tax fund. Whereas we can use it to at least clean them out. And I want to be clear to my district, we are not looking to put swing sets and, you know, things like that in our greenways, but we are looking to clean them. We had Allegheny Cleanways and seldom seen Greenway just a couple of weeks ago, and we spent some CDBG money in order to do it. We removed three or 400 tires, refrigerate, I mean, you know, a long list, a pile you could fit in this room of debris and garbage. However, that's like the tip of the iceberg. I know underneath the leaves and at the bottom and at the top behind in people's backyards, there's much, much more to do. If I had to put a guesstimate on it, I would say we got one twentieth of the actual debris, which felt great. And I love that as an environmentalist myself in the way of, you know, having tires and these things laying around felt really good. So I'm hoping that will translate to parks tax funds going into, really all I'm looking for, which is a heavy lift, is to come in and clean the greenways out. And I mean, clean them out from top to bottom. It's not impossible to do. We did a good bit of it in the last couple of weeks. But, and besides a clean them out, really I'm looking for a trail stabilization. You know, there are enormous trees that fall over, all over the trail, almost as a steady, you know, trail stabilization fund or taking from the parks tax fund where we can continue to do that. So it's accessible, you know, for, for everybody. So, so I, I really, I, I support the idea. And, and overall, I will say, I do have my own concerns as to, you know, I felt like it was kind of sprung on me too, but I like it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I just have to, I want to register I votes for remaining bills. I do have a question on one, but I'll try and get my answers and all that before a final vote on the 28th. So thank you. I'm going to a room and cutting in my neighborhood.
Another one, you're so lucky.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Sorry. Councilman Kraus has spoken more on the minute than I have during this meeting, and yet he's complaining that I have something to say. So. Sorry, Director Dash, thank you. May I indulge, will you indulge me and just give myself and the public your kind of very beginner 101 explanation of the difference between a Greenway and a park?
Sure. So greenways were areas that were designated, the greenways for Pittsburgh program started actually in the 1980s. And the intention of the program when it was created was that the city would designate these spaces as passive open space. And, but, but at the same time, the intention was that the community would be, would be stewarding those spaces. And so, you know, I'd say that there were a number of agreements that occurred, you know, when the initial round of greenways were designated across the city. You know, where, you know, neighborhood organizations or stewardship organizations would then end up taking on the responsibility for the spaces. And, you know, although there has been some successes of the program, you know, I'd say that, you know, you know, community stewardship over time has waxed and waned in a lot of these spaces. And so, you know, with that, you know, the city about now six years ago did a refresh to the Greenways for Pittsburgh program, you know, and, and looked at that. Parks, however, and, you know, and part of the reason that this legislation was moved forward, you know, parks have number one, more permanent protection assigned to them. And number two, does have additional responsibilities that the city then has relative to their care and maintenance. And with these spaces, the six that, you know, the six that you see, these were greenways across the city that, you know, had, you know, you know, as, as councilmen, you know, you know, with the difference between this, the Bigelow Greenway, which there's legislation here for versus something like the Allegheny River Greenway, where there are a lot of gaps that the city needs, still needs to fill in land ownership. You know, what was, you know, what was discussed was bringing forward these areas that had enough contiguous space that they could serve as a park and provide again, that greater protection and greater maintenance long term to, you know, to really these really special places across the city of Pittsburgh that are these wooded hillsides that are adjacent and sometimes incorporated into our neighborhoods that, you know, really give an experience, a natural experience here in Pittsburgh that, you know, that many cities don't offer and can't offer.
So I do think our wooded hillsides are really special and I'm glad that we protect them. And, and this is not a question, and I don't, since I don't want to eat up any more time on the agenda on behalf of council members, I will just make a statement here, but ask you to not respond because Councilman Kraus will get fussy. But my statement is that it occurs to me that we have then in adding these parks, creating these parks where they were not before, there is a different map when we're looking at the walksheds to parks that we kind of argued about with the Parks Conservancy and the equity map that they created, which I complained did not have. That they had excluded about 100,000 people out of their equity analysis because they were not already conveniently located near a park. And so if we're expanding and removing some of these greenways to parks, that puts people in walksheds of parks that weren't in walksheds of park before this vote today. And then secondly, we just voted on accepting the expansion of the Parks Conservancy's cooperation agreement to every park. So before adding these parks, these greenways would not have been included in that cooperation agreement. And as we vote on them here, we are including all of these areas in the Parks Conservancy's area because it is going from Greenway to Park. Just a, just an observation. Please do not respond unless another member wants you to. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Yeah. I just, I'll only be about 15 minutes. I just wanted to back Councilwoman Gross up on the fussiness of our new neighbor down here, you know? Honestly, I think he read three articles at the, the regular reading this morning and I thought to myself, he gave, he gives me the same looks when I, when I go on. And I thought the nerve of this, of this man, but that's all. I just wanted to publicly say, thank.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All bills are recommended. Bill 2306.
Bill 2306 Resolution Authorizing The Department Of Parks And Recreation To Enter Into A Community Partnership Access Agreement With The Poor Law And No Cost For Use At The Bergwin Community Center In Order To Provide Recreational And Community Focused Activities.
Motion to approve. Approve. We've lost. Yeah. Urban Recreation, right? Yeah, motion to approve.
Say second, Councilwoman.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Innovation Performance Asset Management chaired by Councilman Strasburger, one new paper, Bill 2335.
Bill 2335 Resolution Amending Resolution Number 616 Providing For An Agreement And A Lease Between The City And First Vehicle Services Pursuant To Which First Vehicle Will Furnish All Work And Services Needed To Manage And Maintain The City's Vehicle Fleet That'll Cost Not To Exceed $66,689.91, something more, $66,689,914 over a seven-year period.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Councilman.
Thank you. Well, we so, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. I do have some concerns about this bill. And I'll say that the concerns I've heard were some, from some of our city departments who have not been satisfied by first vehicle services where they are, you know, I don't know if other departments have been dissatisfied, but certainly fire trucks have been in these and maybe P W say, who, you know, I don't know exactly all of the, the various departments and authorities this encompasses, but certainly fire trucks have been, you know, stuck in the garage for six months at a time and they're not able to, you know, they're worried about the ability to respond to emergencies. I, I'm just, you know, this is a very big contract. It's over a seven-year period. Aren't very many opportunities. And now if I had my druthers, I would just say, let's hold it for a week and discuss and try to get some answers. So I'm really sorry about putting you on the spot. But I guess my first question is, can you give us any other, can you provide to us at the moment right now, any other applicants or vendors that bid on this project? And two, if we were to essentially take this up next year, would it be putting any type of anything, you know, any city services at risk of not being able to be serviced? Is there some sort of grace period that you can give us to continue the discussion without rushing to the end of the year? And I apologize, I would normally, if I'd had my act together a little bit more, have provided you a heads up that this, these questions were coming. So don't usually like to put you on the spot like this, but it's been a busy time here.
Uh, sorry, I wasn't sure that those questions were directed directly towards me. Um, so this is.
Vehicle services. And yes, I'm not sure who, yeah, who all is here to talk about that.
Yes, that's me. I'm the city's fleet services manager. It is, so that's a two-year extension on, we've already had that contract in place for five years. That's a two-year extension that was written into the original contract. I, I have been working pretty closely with the departments. We have monthly meetings regarding fleet and concerns. I, I wrote into this extension some, some different penalties that I think will help improve the performance of first vehicle services. And I have, I've spoken to multiple departments since there have been some management changes as well as some additional hires for technicians. And it seems that the performance has gotten a lot better. We are doing much better here in terms of keeping vehicles on the road.
So to, I mean, that's helpful to know. That's very helpful to know. To my second question, I mean, would be, we'd be putting any sort of city services at risk if we weren't to approve this year and we were to introduce it first thing 2022 and, you know, how between now and then to discuss further and learn a little bit more?
So this contract expires December 31st. We would, after, after the 31st, not have
Every administrator has done that.
An agreement to, to continue paying first vehicle services for their services.
Okay. Um, that's the extent of my questions right now. I know other council members have questions.
Brandon. I'm sorry, way caffeinated. Just been here too long today. Brandon, hi, welcome. A couple of questions. The, the, the way the, the, our, our legislation, the notes here are written for us. It appears as though we are signing on for a seven-year contract. We are not, if I understand you correctly. We are extending a five-year contract, another two years for a total of seven. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilman, that's correct.
Which makes it a little bit more palatable.
That was a helpful, Clark.
Yeah. And then the 66 million, almost 67 million is the expenditure not to exceed over that seven-year period, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, good. Thank you. I, I mean, that raises my comfort level enormously to be able to vote for today. I do know there have been issues with first vehicle over the years. I remember when Councilwoman Rudiac was on here, we paid visits to first vehicle a number of times to have a better understanding of the kinds of obligations and pressures under which they are under. And, and, you know, it's, we don't, it's not an easy task we ask of them. My last question really is, is some of the dissatisfaction with the timing of being able to deliver repaired vehicles in a timely manner, are any of those being affected by supply chain? Or are you able to answer that question? Could some of the repairs have been slowed down simply because of our inability to receive the parts necessary in a timely manner?
Um, so I, I think there's multiple factors that, that tie into it. One, you know, this year has been very tough with, with supply. And then some of it is, has a lot to do with the age of our fleet. Our fleet's very old and, you know, sometimes either parts are, are hard to obtain or, or they, they just need a lot of repairs.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. You've answered my questions and, and I will support today. But I do agree with the Councilwoman Strasburger that because it is a major expenditure, that it deserves broader discussion and I'm happy to help.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. One recommitted paper, Bill 1852.
Bill 1852 Resolution Authorizing The U R A To Acquire All The City's Right Title And Interest, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Property In The 20th Ward Of The City Designated In The D Registry Office Of Allegheny County. Council District Number Two, Suffer Avenue, Southwest Side Of The Suffer, South Of Sherwood Avenue.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
All those in, well, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle Chair?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bill has been tabled, Bill 2316 under new papers.
Bill 2316 Resolution Authorizing The U R A To Acquire All The City's Right Title And Interest If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Property In The 13th Ward Designated In The D Registry Office Allegheny County, 623 North Homewood Avenue, Council District Number Nine.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2317.
Bill 2317 Resolution Authorizing The U R A To Acquire All The City's Right Title And Interest, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Property In The 26th Ward Of The City Designated In The D Registry Office Of Allegheny County East Side Of Perrysville Avenue, Just North Of North Charles Street, Council District Six.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2318.
Bill 2318 Resolution Approving An Execution Of A D By Inbetween The U R A And The City For The Cellar Block 88, L Lot 150 And The 14th Ward, Frick Park Expansion, Council District Five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill is recommended. Bill 2319.
Bill 2319 Resolution Authorizing The U R A To Acquire All The City's Right Title And Interest, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Property In The 12th Ward Designated In The D Registry Office, North Side Of Larimer Avenue, East Meadow Street, Council District Nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2320.
Bill 2320 Resolution Approving An Execution Of A D By Inbetween The U R A And The City Of Pittsburgh For The Cellar Block 88G And Various Lots Block 88H And Block 88R In The 14th Ward Of The City Nine Mile Run Greenway Expansion, Council District Five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 2348.
Bill 2348 Resolution Calling On The U R A To Report To The City Council All Ongoing Programs And Initiatives That Support The City's Food System.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Just briefly, so I've been circling all the wagons on this and I want to assure everyone that we, what we're looking for is really. Just briefly, so I've been circling all the wagons on this, and I want to assure everyone that we, what we're looking for is really. Just. Easy to report out baseline for council members to look at and discuss, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago. I think it's, it'll be great to see what we have already been doing for the last couple of years, whether that's groceries or corner stores or. Food warehouses or bakeries or any of the kinds of things that we do for technical supportive lending. And I I want to make sure that if we're not talking about anything that is going to be too burdensome of a research project. The, the U R A has given us actually really beautiful hour long PowerPoint presentations, both this budget year and previous budget years. So I assume that they already kind of have the, what the information in hand that we're looking for. And we'll work with them to make sure that they're able to just bring back to us some information that we can look at. In the next three months without any undue research, you know, burden.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda today. We do have meeting announcements on Wednesday, December twenty second at one thirty. Council will host a cable cast public hearing on Bill eighteen fifteen as relates to the Hazelwood Green. Specially Plan District to register to speak, fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by eleven thirty AM Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Offices will be closed this Friday, December twenty fourth in the observance of the Christmas holiday. And next week, council will hold our regular, our last regular meeting, excuse me, of two thousand twenty one. On Tuesday, December twenty eighth at ten AM to register to speak, fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. With that, just very briefly, I want to just encourage the public, if for any. For any reason, you have not been vaccinated, please get vaccinated. And if for any reason you have not yet had a chance to get your booster, please do get boosted. I can speak. Cases are rapidly on the rise. I'll speak for myself, having known family members in the last week who have contracted COVID. Those boosted felt almost no symptoms at all. Unfortunately, one who was not recently passed away. So I'm just encouraging everyone to please take it seriously and also want to certainly. Give our thoughts and prayers to our mayor, who has announced he recently.
Elect Mayor.
A mayor elect, excuse me, I apologize, Mayor Elect Allegheny recently contracted COVID, but also. Has been vaccinated and boosted and is not experiencing anything, but we just want to encourage everyone to realize it's still with us, so please do all you can to stay safe.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry, I'm still here.
So I just want to.
Hello?
I want to wish the best to Mayor Leck Ganey and his family and his staff because everyone's been around him, so. Hope that everyone's vaccinated and doing well. And if there's anything we can do, please let us know, but you know, I've had my own, my own daughter had, has had COVID since September. Firm issues, but she couldn't get vaccinated until recent, until a doctor approved it recently. But separate from that, I just want to say we passed the budget today without any fanfare, without any great struggles or battles. And I want to thank you for being such an amazing chairperson of the Finance and Law Committee. But I also want to thank our Budget Office and the Mayor's Office. Kevin Paulus and his team, and I want to thank Madam Clerk and our Sergeant at Arms and our IMP Department, everybody who helps us put these meetings together. Every week to make sure that we're getting information out to the public, but you will be giving a presentation, is that correct? Or something next week at the last here, last meeting.
And we would, we would normally have done it actually today.
Right, since we didn't.
But since we didn't.
We do it next week.
I don't necessarily feel the need to, but we can.
Yeah, you should do it. So anyway. We have to have some reason to be here next week. But I want to thank you and Reverend Burgess as well for for your work this past two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, hello?
We got you, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, okay. Do we, and Madam Clerk, I thought we had to recess this meeting, is that correct?
No.
No, we could waive the.
No, that.
We're ready. Yeah, that that's done.
The bill passed.
The bill passed for the public hearing that I'm chairing tomorrow?
We'll call you.
No, that, yeah, I'll call you afterward.
All right, sorry, that's all, sorry.
Okay.
Councilman Kraus, you were trying to. Yeah, just to piggyback on on your comments, Mr. Chair. I was hoping to come up with some times for UPMC South Side. I'm, I'm struggling here to find it online, but UPMC South Side on the nineteen hundred block of Mary. Has been doing vaccines from the onset. They are open every single day. Walk-ins are welcome. You don't need to have an appointment. I don't know how many tens of thousands of vaccines they've done there. They are there right now. If you wish to to walk in, you can walk in and do your vaccine. And I wish I had better information as to the hours, but I live a block away and I swear they're there all the time. Morning, noon and night.
Thank you. Anything else? So we're good. All right, so motion to approve the finish in the turn of meetings. All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everyone.